Donna, can you hear us?
Now I can.
Now I can.
All right, thank you.
So, the last one is culture recreation. So we're dealing with, you know, and we talked about it for a while, been kind of quiet the last couple of years, but putting LED lights, Sage Park, golf course has started a list of items, we'll continue to add between equipment as well as physical items there. And then we've got East Berlin Pool, question there, repair removed. There's been requests for pickleball courts, an increasingly popular sport, and then of course more vehicles.
Those are LED lights for Sage Park.
That's a pain. Put them on the list. They've been on there for, I don't think on there for years. They get pushed out.
Before you turn the page, can I ask if that's funded?
Sure.
You have surplus available, six million, is that like current year?
That's across the five years.
Oh, so where, where, you're saying that the 23 million would be in general fund appropriations?
Across the five years.
So just a question, did you say, Kevin, if I understood right, about what is 25, 29 years, you said it's about, what, 30 million dollars in capital?
Eighty-nine million, it's about 30 million in general fund. If you take general fund and surplus together, and surplus, okay.
But some, some of these things. I don't know where you get, I don't know where you, I didn't, so now how do you do, let's say education, the boiler replacements, the window replacement, H-back, we know, some of these things, like boiler replacement, I believe the plan is to do these new boilers, which public building has said they don't fit in those schools because they'll never work because it's all technology in the school, so it cuts that in half. Window replacement, I think they have an issue with some of that, I just, I mean, I don't know where we're coming up with the numbers, but just in talking to public building lately a lot, the numbers that we seem to come up with are way overinflated. Once they start looking at it, but we can, as these things come forward, we can look at it because, you know, for instance, just the school, you know, just a couple of things recently, right, that we faced, the school, the leak at the old courtyard was, you know, they had 200 grand, I know we're still dealing with it, but we have no idea what that, I mean, that could cost more, it could cost less, that could cost a million dollars, or it could cost 25,000. Hence we hired the experts to go look at it and see what, what it was, so, you know, I know these estimates, but I'm guessing just by what we've kind of seen in the last couple of years, and like the prices we throw out there are somewhat higher. Just like remember at one point we were at 6 million dollars, I think for the police station, now we're down to four. Well, a big part of that, rescoping. We did, we took some stuff out, but I mean, I would imagine we could do that with.
I think there's.
Some of this stuff, not, I'm not saying all of it, but just.
I think it will probably vary, if you're talking your purchases. So a vehicle or something like that, probably a little more refined. Because you're dealing with, what does it cost a police cruiser now, if you make the inflationary assumption of the projects? That can be a wide spectrum, even if the exact project was absolutely right, the town may say that's not what we're willing to spend.
We don't know.
But even if you had this, you said 89 was more like 40 million. Even if you cut it more than in half, it's still substantial money relative to what has been spent over the last five years. And of course, there's bonding, assume, there's assuming that bonding here, it's not going to be sitting there jacking up the mill rate to 40 or 50, I don't believe that pressure for anyone.
Don't we hit that, don't we hit that, that's gone way down, what year are we going down?
In two pages, we've got that chart that we've been using the last few years. So I mean, you're down over 50 million dollars, well, should say 43 million now. Assuming, assuming you're at about 57 to 58 million, assuming you borrow a couple million dollars for the police station, and you're down 50 million dollars since 2017, that is a substantial drop, considering that there was also bonding during those years. Not nearly as much, but there was work done for fire vehicles, police field, a number of items. But, yeah, you would hit the 40 million ceiling that you would want to think about in two more fiscal years. So if you're working on 25, it would be after 26, 27, 27 would be the first year, and you'd be looking at about a million dollars of annual debt service coming off, the bonds come off, those are big chunks when the bond starts to tire. Now you have one in 26, 27, you skip a year and then you have a couple more. So there's opportunities, the challenge becomes, you went back in 2020 is the last time we borrowed, and we had a sub 1% net interest rates, phenomenal. Right now, AAA rated, 10-year borrowing, we're staring at about 2.5 to 3, 3.5% to 10-year general obligation bonds. If we wanted to have a line of credit, I had a meeting last week with one of the banks who would love to provide a line of credit, essentially that we could borrow money, put it in an escrow account to try to catch up on vehicles and some of those other things that we don't know exactly when they're going to come up. They're going to go out to bid at the end of October, I'm sure we're going to get some bids for the police station, but if it comes to a police or fire vehicle, pickup trucks, highway trucks, Jim can tell you, I mean, he may call, he may be lucky, there's one on the lot, he may not get one for 18, 24 months, it's a fire truck.
Fire trucks currently are 48 months out. It's the past weekend.
No. So you have the opportunity, if you wanted to go to almost an escrow, almost a line of credit, a bank would agree to an amount of money, and at AAA rated, like the town is, they were jumping at the opportunity, but that kind of financing, they're looking at 4.5%. These aren't crazy rates, if you think historically, forget about the last 20 years, that's an anomaly, but you go back, 5% is not a bad borrowing rate, but it won't be the same as borrowing what we did even a couple of years ago. The longer you wait, I don't see rates coming down, at least in the new feature, the Fed's latest guidance was one more increase and then hold for a while. Market was actually disappointed about, but the idea that they were going to go up and then come right back down doesn't seem to be the case for another year or two. So the balance sheet has improved substantially, it's a good position to begin, from a pure financing standpoint, but your infrastructure needs some, needs some attention. Now if you go back one page, that's the bond plan, kind of where's the bond numbers, where are they coming from? It's 3.7 million in here as a placeholder for the police station, I actually had no idea that number could be zero, that number could be 3.7, it could be something much less. As we get out to 25, the idea was a million and a half for the two police transmission locations. And placeholder, it's an estimate from, it's not a wild estimate, but would have to be something you'd have to consider if you want to do. The Glen Street Bridge, I'm going to be doing more permanent replacement there, the town hall roof, and then moving forward with HVAC at Griswold. The idea there was, if that's going to cost about 8 million, if we look at what other communities received, excluding Coventry, that was a real anomaly at almost 7 million dollars, most of them that were going after 4 and 5 million received around 2 million dollars in the last round. That doesn't mean the second round will be the same as the first, I kind of looked at it and said, let's assume the town's going to get 2 to 2.5 million of a grant, that means it's going to be about 5.5 million to get to 8, 5.5 million of town money, and split it because if it's a two-year project, you have no reason to borrow all 5.5 million first year, and you see it's the same process as Griswold Harbor, I just think Griswold Harbor, that's the order the school should be done in, I prefer PBC and facilities as the order should be.
It's 8 million a school?
That is the assumption.
What's, will it cost us?
Well, right now it's five, five and a half.
So it's going up 3 million a school? Why, why is that, how do we know that?
We don't know, well, this right now is on the high end, because it's assuming that boilers would be added in as well.
And as I told you, the boilers they're looking at do not fit with our heating system, so they would be useless, basically, they would be inefficient.
Well, they would either keep replacing it with the traditional boiler or the high efficiency.
Yeah, traditional boiler will last like 20 or 25 years, so I, you know, I mean, to be discussed, but that's what I hear.
It doesn't have to be replaced regardless?
Yes, yes, they gotta be replaced, but again, with the, I understand what I've been involved with, by the experts on public building, I do this stuff for a living, but they, they just said that efficient ones won't work in the old schools, it just, it won't work. And they're going to be wasted, and they cost double, and they don't, they won't, they won't work at all.
The direction we got from a meeting we had last week was that it wouldn't be wise, there's question to whether it would be wise to put them in, because the envelope of the building isn't high efficiency. So you have these high efficiency boilers picking out a great deal, but they would actually be less efficient because you can have your leaking windows, you don't have the same insulation. If you built the school brand new, and your envelope was all green and everything worked, then it would make sense.
There's a way to go.
But there's skepticism as to whether you get the efficiency, and actually might be less efficient overall for the town. So this is, nobody's bonding on these, this is really to, to highlight what's needed and what's involved there, and to give you a perspective, 34 million dollars of bonding, what's involved there. These are projects, it doesn't have to be these projects, you do no bonding, you do more bonding, but this was kind of the initial plan right now of how to finance some of these bigger items that have many years, we're talking decades of benefit, such things you probably want to borrow.
So on the H-back, though, we're going through the budget process, really we're talking about a little 2 million dollars. And each one of those included a million dollars of program management each, which I question, because that's a lot of money, 3 million dollars, so I don't know where these numbers come from, so we, it's including borrowers' orders, but we were 3 to 4 million dollars.
Plus I'm wondering how to get that 8 for the next two schools.
Well, you're north of 5 for Willard, I know when looking at Willard, the numbers.
During the budget review, Captain.
Willard was, was higher than the one was thought of at one point.
Right, the bigger school, that's the biggest school, right? Yeah, yeah, probably, probably worse.
And if you go out another year, two years, three years.
You've got inflation as well. I thought there was all inflation. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm listening to somebody else, that's okay, sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't.
So this is just designed to be a feel for where are those numbers coming from, obviously if those numbers went from 8 to 5, the idea would be your bonding number coming down as well, but it's to, to also kind of highlight the magnitude of number of projects, value, whether it's 5 million, 6, 7, 8, these are multi-million dollar, multi-year projects on critical areas like elementary schools, and the bridges, the police, fire. So going two more pages forward, it's, the board of finance will recognize this, although I turned it, so it's probably not quite as easy to believe this, not in a meeting, but you know, this is, the operating surplus deficit is what we handed over to the ledger, to the auditors, I don't expect a dramatic item there. We have to close CD funding and the 300,000 that's appropriated late to keep the mill rate down. So all that put together, usually with about 15.7% budget as an unassigned fund balance. From that, the ones that have red check marks have already been approved by the council. There are two items, the last two items.
Right, the town may say that's not what we're willing to spend.
We don't know.
But even if you had this, you said eighty-nine was more like forty million. Even if you cut it more than in half. It's still substantial money relative to what has been spent over the last five years. And of course, there's bonding, assume, there's assuming that bonding here, it's not going to be. Sitting there jacking up the the mill rate of forty or fifty, I don't believe that pressure for anyone.
And don't we hit that, don't we hit that, that's gone way down, what what year have they gone down?
Uh, in two pages, we've got that chart that we've been using the last few years.
Yeah.
So I mean, you're down. Over fifty million dollars, well, I should say forty, forty-three million now.
Yeah.
Assuming. Assuming you're at about fifty-seven to fifty-eight million, assuming you borrow a couple million dollars for the police station. And you're down fifty million dollars since twenty seventeen. That is a substantial drop, considering that there was also bonding down during those years. Not nearly as much, but there was work done for fire vehicles, police field, a number of items. But. Yeah, you would hit the forty million ceiling that you would want to think about. In two more fiscal years, so if you're working on twenty-five, it would be after twenty-six. Twenty-two, twenty-seven would be the first year, and you'd be looking at about a million dollars of. Annual debt service coming off, the bonds come off, those are big chunks when the bond starts to get tired. Now you have one in twenty-six, twenty-seven, you skip a year and then you have a couple more. So there's opportunities. The challenge becomes, you went back in twenty-twenty, it's the last time we borrowed. And we had a sub-one percent net interest rates, phenomenal. Right now, triple-A rated, ten-year borrowing, we're staring at about two and a half to three, three and a half percent. It's a ten-year general obligation bond. If we wanted to have a line of credit, I had a meeting last week with one of the banks who would love to provide a line of credit, essentially that we could. Borrow money, put it in an escrow account. To try to catch up on vehicles and some of those other things that we don't know exactly when they're going to come up. They're gonna go out to bid at the end of October, I'm sure we're gonna get some bids for the police station. But if it comes to a police or fire vehicle pickup trucks, highway trucks. Jim can tell you, I mean, he may call, he he may be lucky, there's one on the lot. He may not get one for eighteen, twenty-four months, if it's a fire truck.
Fire trucks currently are forty-eight months old. It's past weekends.
No. So you have the opportunity, if you wanted to go to almost an escrow, almost a line of credit, a bank would agree to an amount of money. And at triple-A rated, like the town is, they were jumping at the opportunity. But that kind of financing, they're looking at four and a half percent. These aren't crazy rates, if you think historically, forget about the last twenty years, that's an anomaly, but you go back, five percent is not a bad borrowing rate. But it won't be the same as borrowing what we did even a couple of years ago. The longer you wait, I don't see rates coming down, at least in the new feature, the Fed's latest guidance was. One more increase and then hold for a while. Uh, market was actually disappointed about, but the idea that they were gonna go up and then come right back down, doesn't seem to be the case for another year or two. So the balance sheet has improved substantially, it's a good position to begin. From a pure financing standpoint, but your infrastructure. Needs some, needs some attention. Now, if you go back one page, that's the bond plan, kind of where's the bond numbers, where are they coming from? It's three point seven million in here as a placeholder for the police station, I actually had no idea that number could be zero, that number could be. Three-seven, it could be something much less. As we get out to twenty-five. The idea was a million and a half for the um, two police transmission locations. And placeholder, it's an estimate from, like, it's not a wild estimate, but. Would have to be something you'd have to consider if you want to do. The Glen Street Bridge, I will be doing more permanent replacement there. The town hall roof, and then moving forward with HVAC at Griswold. The idea there was, if that's gonna cost about eight million. If we look at what other communities received. Excluding Coventry, that was a real anomaly at almost seven million dollars. Most of them that were going after four and five million received around two million dollars in the last round, but doesn't mean the second round will be the same as the first. I kind of looked at it and said, let's assume the town's gonna get two to two and a half million of a grant. That means it's going to be about five and a half million to get to eight, five and a half million of town money. And split it because if it's a two-year project, you have no reason to borrow all five and a half million first year. And you see it's the same process as Griswold Harbor, I just think it's more hover, that is, that's the order the school should be done in, I prefer PBC and facilities is what the order should be.
It's eight million a school?
That is the assumption in that grant.
What's uh, will it cost us?
Well, right now it's five, five and a half.
So it's going up three million a school? Well, why, why is that, how do we know that?
We don't know, well, this right now is on the high end, because it's assuming that boilers would be added in as well.
And as I told you, the boilers they're looking at do not fit with our heating system, so they would be. Useless, basically, they would be inefficient.
Well, they would either keep replacing it with the traditional boiler or the high efficiency.
Yeah, traditional boiler lasts like twenty or twenty-five years. So I, you know, I mean, to 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 be discussed, but that that's what I hear.
It doesn't have to be replaced regardless?
Yes, yes, they they gotta be replaced, but again, with the, I'm just going by what I've been involved with. By the experts on public building, I do this stuff for a living, but they uh, they just said that efficient ones won't work in the schools, it just, it won't work. And you're gonna be wasted, they cost double. And they don't. It won't, it won't work at all.
The direction we got from a meeting we had last week was that it wouldn't be wise. There's question to whether it would be wise to put them in, because the envelope of the building isn't high efficiency. So you have these high efficiency boilers kicking out a great deal, but they would actually be less efficient because you can have your leaking windows, you don't have the same insulation. If you built the school brand new and your envelope was all green and everything worked, then it would make sense. But. There's there's skepticism as to whether you get the efficiency, it actually might be less efficient overall for the town. Um, so this is, nobody's bonding on these, this is really to to highlight what's needed and what's involved there, and to give you a perspective. Thirty-four million dollars of bonding, what's involved there, these are projects, it doesn't have to be these projects, you do no bonding. Um, do more bonding, but this was part of the initial plan right now of how to finance some of these. Bigger items that have many years, we're talking decades of benefit, are such things you probably want to borrow.
So on the HVAC though, we're going through the budget process. And then each one of those included a million dollars of program management each, which I question, that's a lot of money, three million dollars, so. I I don't know where these numbers come from, so we, it's including borrowers' orders, but we were. Three to four million dollars.
Plus I'm wondering how to get that eight for the next two schools.
Well, you're north of five for Willard, I know when we were looking at Willard, the numbers. Yes.
Yeah.
Willard was was higher than the one was thought of at one point.
Right. The bigger school, that's the biggest school, though, right?
Next up, probably the oldest one.
Yeah, yeah, probably, probably worse.
And she's go out another year, two years, three years, you've got inflation as well.
I thought there was all inflation. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm listening to somebody else, that's okay, sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't.
So this is just designing a field of where are those numbers coming from, obviously, if those numbers went from eight to five, the idea would be your bonding, no, coming down as well. But. It's to to also kind of highlight the magnitude of number of projects, value. Whether it's five million, six, seven, eight, these are multi-million dollar, multi-year projects. On critical areas like elementary schools. And you know, the bridges, the police, fire. So going two more pages forward, it's. Board of, the Board of Finance will recognize this, although I turned it, so it's probably not quite as easy to read, it's not a big meeting, but. Um, you know, this is, the operating surplus deficit is what we handed over to the ledger, to the auditors, I don't expect a dramatic item there. We have the closed CD funding and the three hundred thousand that's appropriated late to um, to keep the mill rate down. So all that put together, usually with about fifteen point seven percent budget as an assigned fund balance. From that, the ones that have red checkmarks have already been approved by the council. There are. Two items, the last two items for two hundred eighty thousand dollars could be going to the Board of Finance on the nineteenth. They were on the original list, so I've included them as in the one point two million of items. There's one million five hundred twenty-five thousand, which includes a million dollars for the police station. Which will be going to the council on the third, and then the Board of Finance, assuming it passes at the town meeting and the council, it will be going to the Board of Finance. On the nineteenth, if all of that were considered, you'd be back to thirteen percent, which is basically where the year started. So it'll allow you to have done a lot of good things, all the way from taking you back to the million dollars for Atkins Street, settling that lawsuit. Taking care of some fire vehicles, police vehicles and others, as well as all the items that were. Discussed over the last month or so, and then a million dollars towards the police station as well, and still hold it to thirteen percent.
So one of the things that we, is, I've been talking to Steve. How many policemen did we take out of the budget saying we have to fund with fund balance if they hired him, because his take on it, he's doing pretty well.
They just were in two officers.
They've got lots of applicants coming in, people coming from other towns applying, if they get all five of them, what's that do to us? And how's that impact any of this?
All five, well, if they were to get all of them, because they did lose a couple, so really three was the gap. Budget that was unfunded, all up with health insurance full year, it was about five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, I wouldn't expect them all year, and traditionally what we do is, if we have new employees not in the budget, first year, we don't hit the health insurance. Similarly, if some teams mid-year, if you don't take it out of the health insurance fund, we just kind of let it first year play out within the fund. So realistically, I think you're looking at the neighborhood of two to three hundred thousand hit, if they get there by January, which is very likely. So they just had two more, right?
Yeah, they scored two more.
So that, I mean, it was just great news.
Where are they at now? These last two, I don't want to number them up.
We've got, kept them to forty-three, we're at forty-one.
Right, so with these last two last week, we're at forty-three.
Believe it's forty, I don't know that for certain, but I believe it's forty-four.
Pretty good progress. That's great. Amazing what a pension.
And then the last two pages are really preliminary, and I really emphasize they were preliminary. Plan, um, I would be sending out this list. Well, as to being, I would do the tenure plan to all department heads tomorrow. Looking for feedback on timing, new items, dollar changes, what have you, uh, by mid-October. We will be meeting as a capital committee either late October, somewhere between late October and mid-November. Uh, unfortunately, as I mentioned to Sal, tonight, we kind of talked around a little bit. The past several years, we've had a board finance member on there, but to get feedback from the town attorney and given where the charter is. We're not gonna be able to do that, but the plan would be to meet as a committee, forward with the plan, obviously, the town manager ultimately puts it into his budget. So the plan would be to come back to the Board of Finance, I feel, anywhere and share out. Planner review, so may not have a member on there, but that way there can be a bit of an exchange if it's not. Throwing you a list of items, millions of dollars, and say, here, we'd like to spend this in March. A couple weeks to go through it, so hopefully that. Works, it's not quite the same, but it will hopefully. Will appease the charter requirements as well as keeping the board finance price. Uh, there's a lot of money here, there's no doubt, um, we typically do have many millions of dollars when we start the capital committee process. Typically don't, we will not go over six or seven or eight million dollars to you. But we, I'm sure, town manager's budget submission will include some substantial capital. The challenge that happens when we request, if we request, this past year was just under three million dollars, we're looking at about a million two. Or if all of the items are done, three million, which is a nice catch-up. But if you fall even a million or two behind what was requested, which was already cut from this. You're constantly trying to catch up to it, so you're two or three million, suddenly it's four or five, it's now six or seven. That's when you start looking at eight million dollars a year. Because the items deteriorate, I mean, Mr. Simons is looking at, what was the average age, thirteen years for the vehicles?
Four point nine right now, but I. And I was with the four new police cars that came in. It dropped, it dropped to point one.
That doesn't mean the others got better, it just means the average paid down, we just put some new vehicles in. So I mean, it's, it's, and the thing is, you have a nice level right now. In that we've caught up, so to speak, or on order, we've caught up with the fire vehicles. And Jim's plan had a three-year break, was it? And then come back in, so it's an opportunity to maybe fill in where fire vehicles would have consumed some of the capital dollars to fill in. Um, as long as we keep the pace with the police vehicles, caught up a few years ago and have kept pace. It's an opportunity, maybe some of the items at the schools, maybe catch up on some of the smaller, the smaller dump trucks, the pickup trucks. The fleet vehicles, maybe some of those things.
Every source had a program to replace the light emitting diodes uh, over the older. Well, does that still available?
They have various programs, um, we did use one of their programs, zero percent interest on bill financing. To redo all of the lights and the controls at the high school, so it no longer has to look like the airport, the lights on all night. The idea was to try to do the same upgrading at town hall, library, the D. Those were the big ones, just because those were the largest users of electricity. We did look at whether saves would qualify, if not, if we have that program for athletic facility planning. But we do have, uh, those were the next on the list.
Like, I remember electricity, some years ago. He signs up for this giant, he's saving, started, and he promised they would show us the savings every year and it would pay for itself. I've never seen any kind of report, I want to save.
They give us a report every year, um, more than happy to share it, it's like fifty or sixty pages, but it. It shows the savings, um, the electricity really hasn't risen substantially, even at the schools, we've been in around. Eight hundred twenty-five to eight hundred fifty thousand total.
The savings we pay for the upgrade, is that working?
I would say no. The way they wrote the savings, the guaranteed savings, they are showing. That it realized the savings that was intended. There were parts of that program that, um. In a way to say, never should. The solar panels, uh, seem to have been a big win. Um, there's quarterly rebates as well as a pure-up program that the town dissipates in and they've seen those items. Um, but there were other aspects of the project that. Even just looking at the original plans, um. Some of them have a payback of a thousand years or more, just look at the executive summary for the binder, I.
It'll still be here, it'll still be on our calendar.
There's nothing, there's nothing I'm gonna tell you when that's, when that's the plan, we're never gonna achieve that in any of our lifetimes, sorry, but.
And we started that plan when, like?
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, that was already basically done, but.
The town purchased, as part of that deal, the town was purchased, the streetlights.
Oh, yeah, right.
So.
And we saved that on that?
I don't know, see, I don't know that we spent more, but.
Maybe broke.
Biggest challenge there is going to be replacing all the poles, because there's a lot of poles that are in rough shape. You can lean on a light pole, let it move. Unless you're a very large person, that's that's concerning.
Timing of the police station renovation. Funding associated, bonding, whatever. One of the recommendations was to start by taking a million dollars from the, aside, fund balance. Where do we stand on the actual? Proposal, you know, the actual call?
Bid is on the street, the uh, there will be a pre-bid meeting. I believe it's next week or the week after, bids are scheduled to be open over twenty-sixth.
The bids are due on October twenty-sixth.
So, so right now, the only authorization of that project is the original three hundred thousand?
Yes, that's for the. Can we get the same thing on our meeting?
What's happening under there?
He he would like the architect, so I mean, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna come back and present the finished project, right, after we took out all those things to the town council.
Okay, so you have an estimate now.
To finish project estimate right now, which is a pretty aggressive estimate. Some, some of it has come in last, this is from public building, it's right around three point nine, four million, that's pretty aggressive, that includes a fifteen percent contingency. So four million, so my, my question to follow up on that is, we're borrowing three point seven, if we pick a million out, we're at a four point seven, well, actually, we're at five million on that. Why, why are we so, why are we a million over what it's gonna cost us? And that's, that's from public buildings, saying that's a, to four million is a, is a, you know, aggressive estimate, they think it's less than that. So why are we gonna be at five million?
Because you don't want to be in a position on the twenty-sixth if you open it, and folks are wrong. I can tell you, for example, the security vest fuels, the direction we had was, it's gonna cost you about three to four hundred thousand, it was over eight hundred thousand. We've had a few others where we've actually declined the bid, it's so much higher. We've had others that have come in low, we just completed a project with water control, we expected to spend two point eight, we spent one point two all along.
Why don't, why don't we just wait on the bonding until we know what that, that the bids are coming in at?
You can do that, but your timing around the bonding and the requirements of it. The bids going to hold for about sixteen years.
Yeah, we approved the three point seven, we don't have to.
You don't have to borrow one penny, you could leave it all on the side. And the only way the town would actually borrow that. Uh, and it's written into the ordinance, is it has to be a majority of you, Roche and me. So the only way would be at least two out of the three of us signed off. Otherwise, legally, there would be no borrowing.
How, the bonding process takes how long, from the start to the, so we we have our special meeting on the third, right? Town, the town meeting.
The public hearing.
The public hearing, the third, and then. And when is there, sixty days from there?
To to do, to do borrow or do the bond?
Before we borrow, I'd love to know when the bids come in at, and and that, and that's, and this is my thinking with the million dollars upfront, because. The bids come in at the end of October, before we would say any, see any bills for that project would be probably February or March. Okay, so we'd have a million dollars to to spend, I mean, obviously, this is not all gonna be completed in a couple of months. I I mean, so the rush to the bonding, you know, unless we, you know, the brakes are going up, we don't just go out, but, I mean, you know, we, I I just, I hate.
This is just an authorization, this is not.
I know, I know what it is, but, you know, it's still, we just don't even know what it's gonna cost, I mean, but again.
Yeah, that makes sense to me too, if we got the surplus, just put a million dollars aside, and then that'll buy us time.
It actually, it actually won't, because, let's say it comes in at three million dollars for the project. We can't issue a purchase order to the winning bidder for more than what you've appropriated.
I got you.
So, we have this issue actually with the um, with the old eight eighty-nine property. We were doing it off of a state grant and there was a secondary grant. But we couldn't issue, we we couldn't even sign the actual official winning bid, the contract. Because we didn't have the amount, so they actually had to split the contract and agree to do some work, and that thing. Really hasn't moved much.
That is the answer, though.
So the idea here is, your ordinance is an appropriation too, so you're not just authorizing, but you're appropriating, so the money can, the contract can be signed, the money can be spent. And you can determine later on how you choose to fund it, you may choose to come back, let's say, let's say, by some chance it comes in at two and a half million. And collectively, you say, you know what, I don't want to borrow any, take a million and a half out of fund balance and pay for the whole thing with fund back, you can do that. And then the ordinance sits there, the borrowing sits there as capacity, it's almost like receiving a credit card, but never used. Never even activated, really, if you know, if we don't even market it.
But conversely, if the bids come in a million dollars higher than what we're estimating. Maybe people who don't want to go ahead with that project, as is. You know, and at that point. You know. I I I like your original thought of wait until we know what's in the bid.
But again, that's not borrowing, this is just getting you, it's giving you up to the amount to to not have to spend the time and money of a referendum. To do that, if if it ultimately comes in as very low, and you say, you know what, I don't even want the authorization out there. At either Board of Finance or Council, either one of you can do a motion to deauthorize. This year I didn't do it, but each of the last five years, I've come back with deauthorization for different bonding, because we just didn't need the money. Uh, the projects weren't completed at this point. But if you actually wouldn't even need me or Roche or anyone to come back, you could just make a motion yourselves at one of the meetings and say, I want to deauthorize that bond, or I want to deauthorize a million of the bond.
Even if it's been through town meetings?
Town meeting just gives you the approval to go up to that amount, you don't have to build it.
No, I'm saying about the deauthorization.
Oh, you've de, you've deauthorized several times. Because it requires approval of the council and board of finance in addition to the town.
Right, and would you concern it's having a law ordinance applied, even if it's low, sitting in the best?
Well, I I think once you have the authorization. In place. You know, if the bids came in saying five and a half million dollars, right, and at that point, I think the project's due, it's, I'm saying. Okay, well, the money's already authorized. I mean, it's already, we have an appropriation. You can go spend, right, my concerns of it being too much.
That, that's where we would have a problem, if it breaks five million, the project now went over five. So that's where you would have, we, we couldn't even do the bonding because the project costs, we'd have to go back, it would now have to go back to referendum. And go out if it's over five million. Right, so it's the.
Changed my thought to four point nine, my thought, four point nine is too much. I'm still out of it.
Well, you can also, you can tell us, we're not going to, I mean, I I don't, I don't think the mayor's gonna say, no, I want to go ahead, forget everybody else, we're gonna borrow. But I I think at least two of the three would say, I mean, I would say, I'll speak for myself, if you say, I don't want to do it, that project's too expensive, I'm not gonna sign the document. I mean, I may have the legal right to do it, but I'm I'm not going to do that.
So the, doesn't the charter, isn't the charter from a referendum perspective kicking at the bond authorization level? Doesn't say if the project's over five million dollars, it says it's at the bond authorization level. So if you go out for and authorize a bond for five million dollars, and you, whether you think the project's coming in less or not, you hope it is. It's not whether the project's five million dollars, it's the bond authorization. That's in the charter.
What we were told by Corporation Council was that, because originally.
Right here, it says bond authorization to over five million dollars, by an ordinance to the town council, have to go to referendum. I was on the charter revision commission. Okay, then you're okay.
I will tell you that any type of.
I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's weird.
Yeah, I don't know, that's, Corporation Council had told us, if you go over five million for the whole thing, that's why the phase, the initial phasing was a problem. Because even cutting in phases, the total cost is gonna be great.
He did say that the other night.
Yeah.
Because I was concerned that at that, we were at five million, even.
So we'll have to go out, we'll have to get all, we'll have to have a town referendum on the receivers.
With the schools, yes, that. And that's gonna be the issue of going for the next grant, that's what we've been taught, we've been meeting and talking through that, because. It's very likely they're gonna be over five million.
I don't, we don't know the number yet, but the thing is, if we authorize bonding for over five million dollars, then we're gonna have to.
The challenge is going to be that the state has already told us, and winning ditters have said this, they were told this was one of the reasons is. The state wants to see adequate funding, to be confident that you have funding lined up for what they believe is a reasonable cost. The four point nine is not viewed by the state as a reasonable prediction of where it's gonna cost, what it's gonna cost to do those two schools. Could one of them commit a four point nine? Possibly. But going in with the both of them, the state gave feedback to the board of that, that. You don't, your funding wasn't adequately lined up. So I I think the town would have to adopt an ordinance, doesn't mean we have to borrow it, it means the ordinance has to be in place to town, instead, we're willing to do that. So I, I think the town would have to adopt an ordinance, doesn't mean we have to borrow it, it means the ordinance has to be in place to town, instead, we're willing to do that. It's very similar to the high school project, the town was intended to borrow forty seven million dollars, but ultimately, it had, I believe, sixteen and then went up to eighty three. The number was much larger, because it had to include the bond as well. And that's the project, even, even if the state, even if the project was five and a half million and the state gave us five, you still have to have an ordinance for five and a half, because any of the state grant money eats into that total ordinance.
So here though, now we have two interpretations, this is what scared, this is what scared me the other night, we were at five million, so Jeff said at the meeting, okay, you're at five million, if you go over, you gotta go to referendum. The charter says bonded, we're not bonding five million, we're bonding three point.
Bonds, notes, or other obligations that you issue.
Well, so why are we even gonna go near five million, why don't we just, I understand, we're, we're, we wanna bond three point seven million, right? And we're taking a million out of fund balance, that's four point seven, how do we get to five million?
Because you already appropriated.
Other than three hundred thousand, well, then maybe we oughta lower something, I don't, I don't think it's good to be at five million.
But we did get confirmation from both the town attorney and bond council, they both agreed the interpretation, because the ordinance, the, the charter says in excess of five million. Wasn't this three hundred? I think it's exceeding five million.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what Jeff did.
Five million dollars or less.
Is this three hundred already included in the price for one million?
That's bonded, Henry, you're right, it doesn't say.
I'm not sure it says.
It's not, not sure.
But they got a lot of stations are always saying general fund or bonds, so it could be up to the full amount of bonds.
Yeah.
That's why.
Well, it's meant by other obligations, so.
Well, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you do four point nine?
I'd be happy, that'd make me.
You'll be happy that.
That'd be, make me feel a little bit better.
Again, if the whole project comes in at four point nine.
Yeah.
You say, well, no, we don't want that, but wow.
Right.
Since you have the ordinance in place.
Oh, 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 four point nine bonding, you mean?
Have the ordinance up to four point nine, so that takes all this fear of automatic referendum out of it. And then we have enough cushion to go up to four point nine, but with, but if the bids come in, you decide.
You're talking about the million from the fund balance? For now. We're, we're bonding three point seven.
Project is four point nine, we're borrowing for four part, four point nine. And again, you might end up borrowing two, most likely, or only two or two and a half, the ones coming as, yeah, so it's safe on the public building, right? It's full.
The other challenge that you have to consider is the timing of when this occurs. You know, when your bids, October twenty sixth, you're gonna have an election November seventh, you're not gonna have another meeting until twenty first. Which is an organizational meeting, and then you're gonna have one meeting in September, I realize you have special meetings. So. But you're coming into an odd time for this to happen within the elections.
So if you go with four point nine, you decide to use, you know, fund balance for a million. Yeah. Borrow what you need, maybe three, four and a half.
That we're bonding. What, that's, that was the purpose of the million, something to do with that.
I think you're setting three seven, go three six. Yes, totally.
The total, you're saying it's bound three point six. Or four point nine, what are you saying?
Yeah, but he, he is, it's.
I know we don't have to spend, I get that part.
Three point six.
Yes.
If the total comes in at three million six oh one.
Yeah.
You don't have an ordinance. When borrowing more. We're just trying to leave some.
But we take it out of fund balance, the rest of it, all right?
Are you agreeing to do that now?
Sure they are.
I don't know, at least one million.
Anytime until we see the bids lined up, but we can't wait that one.
But all, what we're saying is have, have it ready, you can decide at that point, flexibility will be there, keep all the options open.
I mean, ultimately, this is going to be your call, Tuesday night, whatever you guys decide, you, you could decide zero, you could say, you're gonna have the public hearing, there's no vote at that.
Right.
If, if the council decides, like you did with the six and a half, we're not comfortable going forward, Board of Finance has no say in it, it doesn't come to that. Uh, if you decide to send three seven, they could, they could alter it. They could reject it, in which case you guys would have to then, I believe, come together based on the charter if they reject.
Well, you know, I mean, the police renovation, we've been talking about it, it's a top priority, you know, for this town, I mean. We don't have lockers for the women, I mean, so to say that we're not gonna do it is, you know, I mean.
We're Jerry, oh, I, no, I think we need to do something, but not at any cost.
The other thing is, when we laid out the budget, during the budget process, we said, we said, well, let's put a million dollars of surplus into the police. That was one of our strategies, get this thing moving along, so I won't have a hard one, going, using a million dollars out of the surplus for the police station, which is a top priority item.
I would rather go without a fund, that whatever the bids come in, we can move forward immediately. That makes sense.
I mean, keep the bonding going at three point six, maybe we drop it down just so we're a little bit less than the five million, right?
You actually put, uh, surplus on the fact also, when you can spark it. We'll go to end, the grizzle end.
That also, that also included us, that also assumes some state money too.
Do you like to change the number to three point six instead of three point seven? We didn't notice, we didn't notice anything.
You guys can decide, so state, state money, right, we're supposed to have a decision in September, but we're not at the police station?
Well, they're still working on it.
Still working on it?
Yeah, so there's another round, Donna, uh, Jack, and, and, um, Rick Close are all on board, pushing it to get something. It could be half a million, it could be two million, it could be anything in between, but they are still really pushing it. So both sides are together pushing it, so I'm hoping, we're all hoping we get something, something, you know, it's probably, it's probably a full ride, but.
If that's, we're gonna authorize three point six and stay away from the five million dollar project.
Just keep us safe, well, to be clear, when you come up with that number, whatever a state grant is received, is set against the bond authorization amount. So if the bond authorization's three six, and the state came in with, let's just be really nice and say, three five, there's only a hundred grand left of borrowing capacity. The town, it, it reduces that capacity, any grant would.
It's a good thing.
That, that's, that's not a bad thing.
But then the total bits come in more than, I, what's available, then, then we have to, we have to fund balance.
So then, there's no downside to authorize up to four point nine.
There's no downside to authorizing to five, that's why we put it that way, I don't, I don't see a downside to doing, one, because you're only authorized, you're not, so there's no borrow. So here, here's my take, I, I, I'm okay with that, as long as we keep the option of, if it's too high, it's too high, you have to go back to the drawing table and figure out a way to be at a lower cost, but.
Okay, with the five here is.
Well, it says no.
I believe it, George.
Not exceeding five million dollars, it says.
It's five or higher, right, George knows.
Exceeding five million dollars, it's greater than five million has to go to referendum.
I don't, I don't say what we gotta do, I would just leave it as it is.
Now, the other piece to it is, the project doesn't go forward unless the council ultimately accepts. We can't, you, you have, you have absolute control.
Right, I mean, we all.
But I'm saying, the council, but yeah, you won't even have, no, no, I don't want anybody to walk away thinking that they're not gonna do the project, I'm saying, if the bids are too high, you say, this is too much. Council has every right to say it's too high, we gotta go back out, we gotta go do something different, and we've done that on the project. So, about a year ago, we were talking on specific five point two million, right?
Or six.
Six entire project, right? And we said, we'll cut it down, and they put this three phase into one phase, and it's three point nine. This is what we're talking about, right? Has there any been conversations where the guy must have said, well, I think we can get four and a half million now, or are we still saying three point nine?
Public Building told me, Don told me, Public Building had this discussion the other night, he's a construction professional, he's more, much more than probably any of us sitting here. And, uh, he said, four million was their estimate of cost at the high end, that's what the contingency do. That's the high end, they, they were very conservative, said, all right, we think it's less, that's what he told me last night, I talked to him last night, you think it's less than four million?
And they're talking to the architect.
They're talking, uh, yeah, I mean, they're, and, and in their experience, I mean, they, you know, they build buildings, it's got a bunch of them doing that, so. So, you know, that, that seemed pretty comfortable, you know, listen, we know today, when I was, it could be a little off, I mean, I was today.
Wait, that's October, that's the big stomach.
Yeah, in a month, we got a month, yeah, we got a month till now, yeah, basically.
But I, I think what you're trying to do is to have everything ready so that we can avoid the bid.
Yes, correct.
Six day window, and then in October, you can react and start creating the bond.
So let's leave it at three point seven, and we'll, we'll borrow the mil, we'll take the million out of fund balance, and we're at the five million, with the three hundred grand, we're at five million, there we are, well, done, that was our plan. Why, leave, leave it, leave it be then.
Does, doesn't your authorization have to include the million? We usually do, it has authorization and appropriation for a project at the same time, that's what I'm about. So it would be the amount we intend to borrow plus the nine and a half.
Both items are on the council agenda, and they're already on the draft agenda for you guys on the nineteen, obviously, if, if either one fails, the council may not believe it, but.
So is it as one item, or is it two?
Two separate votes, one is a non-budget appropriation, and the other is, um, appropriating the ordinance. Because then the ordinance has, the, I mean, both have deposits, the ordinance has a window of time, because even though it's not an automatic referendum, just to be very clear, an individual could petition as they always have, paid the referendum.
The town council can decide to send it for anything over three million dollars, and then petition by, but you have to get signatures, anybody can do that on anything.
Right.
I mean, if it's a million dollars over, I mean, if, you know, if it's over, Jerry, to your point, you know, it's five, we're at five million and start going over that, yeah, we probably have to go back to the corner and just say, what? You know, what's going on, but that doesn't mean we're not gonna do it, we can just phase it in.
We'll, we'll have to watch, we've gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, great, yeah, so I would just leave it as it is, what, yeah.
At the meeting, this is the first time you're gonna see, but you're gonna get the money and spend, right, not if you have seen it in plan.
Right.
So I think you'll get an opportunity to act this and see if you've accomplished everything that you had in mind, you know, Public Building comes, they have seen it, but not you.
Right, we haven't seen it, I mean.
We should see, I mean, you guys are okay with seeing the price at our meeting too.
No, I just, I haven't seen the price. That's their estimate, just around four point, I don't know what that's, I forgot, I forgot.
We still, we still, we're going to old numbers, you know, the old percent.
They said, we can redo the high school, there's a three million, it's about over a hundred, so.
I understand.
Well, we'll know October twenty sixth when the bids come in, we'll know for sure, right, but it is, you know, it is what it is, we'll figure it out from there, right? Whatever we do now, kind of does, I mean, it matters, but, and it's good to hit the ground running after that, but.
It's been delayed so long, if we wanna have the finance lined up as clean as possible, get that moving as quickly as possible.
Comes in at six point five million and, oh, yeah, I have to figure out what to do first on it and phase it in.
Drive our feet, run it out a few more years and have it commit well, please.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think we do it, it's not, yeah, sooner or later, it's gotta get done.
We do it.
Well, that's always been going, right?
If you, restaurants, could, you could carve out eighty eight restaurants and.
Right, right.
Kind of wanted that, but you could.
You could carve out pieces of, we have.
Let's say the backyard is kind of hard, you've got the salary board's coming, where are you gonna take the president, so that, that always won, unless.
Now, there's some immediate things that have to be.
I'm pretty comfortable with the number, so I think we're gonna be okay.
I agree, now, you have to go with its, you know, feelings for now, until we know, right? And that was all, that was just done, that was the whole.
That's the whole batch, yeah.
That, that's the whole Public Building thing, but, yeah, so we'll probably just leave it as we are. The three point seven million bonding and the million dollars out of fund balance, guys, everybody good with that?
Seven two one, that, it is, we're waiting at five, so now, what do you see for three point seven?
Yeah, let's leave it as it is.
I think I said ordinance.
The ordinance, the ordinance.
Okay.
Three point seven and a million dollar out of fund balance, plus the three hundred thousand equals the five million, right, that we already.
The three hundred thousand's already in the.
Correct, but, but that, that brings us up to the five, right, we already, it'll bring it to five hundred, five million, five million.
My calculator is.
What's it?
Hold on, three, three hundred thousand, I thought came out of three point nine.
All right, no.
It is, this is a separate amount, the three point nine estimate, you're talking?
Yeah.
Does include three hundred thousand. Yeah, that's what I thought, like, their money's, it should be three point six, now it has to be three point nine.
Right, if we already took the three hundred thousand out, that makes sense.
Yeah, but the thirty seven that the mayor's talking about is the bond or capacity. I think you're talking, I think you're talking.
Five dollars is a maximum, it's not.
That's, that's what we did with this. We said we'd go up to this price, we didn't bid it.
Right, 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 yeah, we did that, and we've done it with virtually every water control project, uh, it would, I think the police radios made the whole slightly.
But. That's something to get over the police radios, they didn't know though, that new system did it, I thought that was the hope, I remember these discussions, because it was one of my first budget hearings without the Board of Finance, my first time, and I remember, we said, well, it's, that's, now, all the new radio will cover that. And now, seven years later, we're hearing that it doesn't, how come it's the first time we've ever heard this?
I know that the deputy chief is on, he has been working.
Yeah, I'm saying, we've mentioned this.
How come we didn't hear about it, when we built that radio system, scratch it, it didn't cover, what we needed to cover, that, that's pretty upsetting, maybe seven years later, they still dealing with that, that's, that's one.
Yeah.
For them, for public safety, but how, how come nobody said that when it was finished within a year, that, oh, yeah, well, it's all good, I asked, I must have asked them a hundred times, the police department, we good with it? You got all the coverage you need now? Yes, and now we don't, I, I don't understand why that wasn't communicated to the council, we would have fixed it then, I know.
And I don't think, I mean.
True, hey Drew, you there?
DC's on, I, I don't think this is new, but.
No pressure, Drew, no pressure, no pressure, Drew, hey, no, Drew, you're mad.
Hey, hey, listen, I, listen, I'm just upset for you guys that when we did that million dollars, you know, in the beginning, this, back in twenty sixteen, I think, right? Somewhere around there, whenever we get the new, I thought, I always thought we had all, all the coverages were fixed.
What they did at that point was they upgraded our.
That point was.
Was upgrade our systems to a digital system, so there was a lot of upgrades that was done, but we still have dead spots in our system that have never been addressed. And one of the problems we've had is that, for instance, back when they did that project, our radio service company should have identified issues that should have been taken care of back then that weren't. And the reason for that is our police department transmits from one location only, and that transmitter is at the police department, it transfits, it transmits off that tower. We do have several other antennas in town, but they are receive only, not transmit. And the problem we're having is the signal does not reach the entire town, and that we have dead spots in which officers cannot contact dispatch. I'll give you a quick example, we had a sergeant on the Chamberlain Highway, Southington Road, very common intersection, he just rolled up on a crash, and he called in to dispatch for additional services and ambulance, uh, and additional cruisers, and he got no response. Now, the fact was that dispatch could actually hear him, but could not transmit back, cause he was in a dead spot. Now, those dead spots have been there since when I started thirty years ago. So, the problem is, they're becoming more of a problem, because we're answering a lot more calls, and we're a lot busier than we used to be, and now we're getting into these areas where these dead spots are becoming more of an issue. So what we need to do is, not to completely replace our system, all we need to do is update it to include a simulcast system, in that the other transmitters we have in town that will receive a signal, they should receive and transmit both. And that would, um, handle the, uh, dead spots that we have in town, and, and we've run that by our, our radio service company, and, and one of the things we did was, to be quite honest, we ditched our old radio service con, company, because they led us to this point, and unfortunately, we're not radio experts, they are, and they really let us down, and that's why we have a new company now that came in and has done an assessment, and has come up with a plan to fix those deficiencies. And I had that plan also reviewed by, uh, an individual that, that works emergency services radios for the state, and, uh, they have no skin in the game there, and they came in and did an assessment, and verified everything that we got from our new company, so it's unfortunate, and I, I agree with you that when they did that project several years ago, this should have been included. Um, but it wasn't because those problems were never really brought forward, so, does the radio system function? It does, but we still have dead spots, and that's what's causing us some, some safety concerns, particularly when you have a situation where the officer may not be able to raise dispatch at all. The officer may not be able to r- raise dispatch at all.
Yeah, well, that's not acceptable, that's not good, so in my mind, that raises to the top of the list of anything.
That's why this was kind of. Yeah, I I haven't been in this position in the past, and really, it would have been nice that this uh came forward earlier, but. Um, we have officers that are complaining about these dead spots, and. That's why we brought this forward, because we can't just tolerate it anymore and accept that that's the way it works. Um, when the fire department redid their system, that's exactly what they did, they went to a simulcast system, and and frankly, that's. The addition we need in our radio system as well.
Well, so folks here, what do we do to fund this immediately? That that's unacceptable.
Well, I I get a question, I, do you guys, are you using cellular as backup? I mean, how acute is the problem? Because we have the same problems in Ever Source. And you just found guys use their cell phones to get around it. Now, that doesn't solve the problem when the town is out power wise, you know, and the tower is out. But on a day-to-day basis, it may not be as acute as we're.
Thank God we have cell phones, but.
I I understand that.
Telephone to call it dispatch, that's not practical.
How much is it gonna cost?
So what do you do? So Drew, what do you, I assume you're doing cell phones in that area then, right? What do they do?
We don't even always know when it's happening, to be honest. Um, but the officers are not issued cell phones, only the command staff and supervisors. However, everyone has a cellphone, so if they needed to, they could do that, but the problem is, in an emergency, you may not have that option to be able to get to your cellphone. So I I don't think that's something that we can really rely on.
No, I agree, well, I know, so what what's the cost of this? Do we know? Do we have a cost?
Currently. Could be as much as a million and a half.
Correct.
Is this how it is?
The the million and a half. The million and a half covers the addition of our system and expanding it into a simulcast system. As well as updating some of the hardware and software in our dispatch system. That's currently falling behind, so it would really be a complete upgrade of our our entire system.
Now, you guys drew it out, you was able to get some numbers from very reliable sources, our our new provider, as well as the other person we work with. Obviously, just like anything else, we'd wanna have a more, I think, more informal.
Yeah.
Proposals to come forward and request it.
So we need to.
But it was added to the list and it was discussed earlier tonight because. It's, well, it's public safety, so it's critical, but the dollar amount is is quite significant, was it?
But, so.
Drew, what would be the timetable?
Yeah, how how long would that take once we, let's say we get the actual number from uh the vendor?
How long would it take to perform the work? I I don't know, I'd have to look into that, um. You know, we're basically gonna be piggybacking on some of the antennas that already exist in town. So I think some of the infrastructure for that has already been done, for instance, by the fire department. And we would be piggybacking onto some of their equipment, so I don't think it would be a long-term project once we get the ball rolling on it.
Jim can tell you, that fire project was a, still, it's it's a long project. It's probably not as long as that project, but I I would suspect it's not a couple of weeks project either.
I guess like Jim.
I think that they're heading in the right direction.
Yes.
I don't know exactly where they're going to put their simulcast sites. Um, we do have some structures now in those areas in which we'd be more than happy to let them look at. Um, but yeah, it's it's a, I start off with trying to get electronic pieces of equipment now. Um, with the problem with the chips and everything else is a problem. So even if you did, and I don't know what their timeframe is, even if you did appropriate the money, you still have lead times to work on. And build out times.
Well, that's why we have to start immediately. Uh, how to how to sell, what do we need, and I we I can't wait, and so, and I agree with you, you're not gonna get the equipment tomorrow, we call up today, it's not, I mean, you all.
So, but we could break down the cost.
Yeah, we need to get the cost and uh we need, we need to s- start ordering the parts we need, that's just not, I I I'm shocked to hear that. I'm really disappointed that we just heard that tonight, I I don't think we ever heard it before.
Mind it as well, I think this is something that probably should have been done a long time ago, and um I I think it's. Been a long time in the coming, and uh I haven't been in the position I was in the past, but now I am. So, um. I feel bad bringing this up, but it is what it is, I wish I could go back and redo that, but we can't do that. Um, we unfortunately aren't radio service experts, so we we, some stuff has been missed over the years and it probably shouldn't have.
Uh, it happened, I mean, it's not, you know.
Sorry, Drew, we forgive you.
May I propose what the same, from the ball, a practice we have done in the past, rather than just giving you a number.
Yeah, no, 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 we gotta get it.
Is is that, is this one point five million the same that you. Says add two police transmission locations?
Yes, yes.
No, I, it sounds like something completely different, sounds like you're replacing all the software, hardware.
That's not the radio system at all, yeah. There would be two additional uh transmission sites that would be added, one would be down in East Berlin, one would be in South Kensington. That's that, I believe that's what you're looking at on that plan.
Oh, the same plan he was talking about.
That's part of the plan.
That's part of that one point five million.
That's all included.
It's trying to put it in five or six words.
Maybe moving it from twenty five back to twenty four on your worksheet. If we, if we were very aggressive at it.
Yes.
I mean, we're almost, it's a twenty, you know, next year anyways.
Joe, you wanna make sure it's not twenty, it's one point five.
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure it's it's one point five, it's one point five, uh, two different things.
So, and we'll we'll get the proposal to set it down.
Yeah, thank you.
It's bad, it's not that bad, Drew. It's not a two million and a half dollar project.
Well, Drew, we'll get it going, Drew, we'll get it in the system and, you know, hopefully, I I know, I I just.
I can get some better information for you too, as far as um the logistics of getting it done, like Jim Simon said. We may be able to work with some of the fire department equipment that exists, but that's some conversations we're gonna have, and I can have Norcom do some additional work and. We can get a better estimate of how soon we think we could actually move forward with the in, with the with the project.
Right, needs to get done. Oh, my God, yeah, it's no question, no question. Yeah, so, thank, yeah, thank you, Drew, we appreciate it, thanks, Drew.
Thank you.
Well, what else you got?
Just to cut through.
Yes.
You want us to come back for three point seven?
Yes.
We're back to that, really?
Well, we wanna make sure that we're doing the same thing.
What, you don't come back and there's another number?
No, three point seven. Plus the million dollars from bond balance.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna send. Correct, there's two separate.
Separate items for council.
I guess, so the bit, we went a big circle around this, it's a big, it's kind of a circle here, so we went around and we're back.
Do you want, do you wanna talk about the towers too now? So, uh.
So, can I get a, like, people telling you that I should, we've got a lot on the table.
Yeah.
It's nice we can do the police station and the towers. But any thoughts on. You wanna go with the rest of the stuff, because we wanna make sure we line up our request and the budget presentation. Yeah, but it's coming up soon, because we asked a group of capital requests. And.
Probably gotta digest it a little bit maybe, but it's a lot, that's to look at, right?
But we have to protect our investments, the schools.
Okay.
You know, and.
Well, with with the HVAC, we're already all on board.
The boilers and the windows.
It's gonna be a big one. So, the HVAC.
The boilers is not as big as you guys.
If I heard correctly, there might be another open from the state where it can reapply to get HVAC money. There is one right now, has to be inside December thirty first.
Oh, yeah, we're doing it, right?
There is right now, and and Ashley's on, so Ashley might speak on it. Um, the the key right now is getting direction from the PBC facilities group to figure out the direction. Mayor, you mentioned earlier about boilers that go high efficiency or replace the same type more traditional boilers. And that has an impact of being able to connect, because if you go with a certain type of unit. Can attach the high efficiency in, so you're sort of down a path and choose to go a certain way. Um, the challenge with that becomes, we we can likely still qualify for state money. Federal money or federal grant programs, which the Board of Ed did pursue, unfortunately they win, but Board of Ed is pursuing every opportunity to secure grants for these. Uh, the feds are very much tied into green energy and, you know, so if we go down that path. And I've heard the logic, I I'm far from an expert on any of it, so I just heard of folks who do it. Um, it probably puts the town out of the running for federal grant. Ashley, is that fair to say?
Yes. Uh, most of the federal grants are um through the Department of Energy, so they they really kind of focus on energy efficiency. Um, so the reason why we didn't get the federal grant is because the equipment that we currently designed, the Willard HVAC project. And what was also the design moving forward for what we hope to be the Griswold and the Hubbard projects, they're not energy efficient. To the level in which the federal government is looking for. That makes sense.
But, that makes sense, but so, and that's all, that that's all great, except if we grant or no grant, if we put. And I'm just going by, I'm not history track, I'm hitting means for this thing, but. Um, I'm just going with public building and their their, you know, um. Analysis of it is, we're gonna buy the high efficiency units, they will not work in those old buildings, it's it's like, just might as well just throw the money out the window, literally, talk about.
They actually said that they shut down some.
Correct, yeah, it's that, it's that bad.
It's a tuned environment.
And it's it's probably half the cost of the high efficiency stuff, so if we're not getting a grant from the federal government, I mean. You know, it doesn't really matter, I guess, because we're not gonna spend that kind of money to hook up with a system that where it doesn't work anyway. Which would defy any logic that I could think of, but.
Not the federal government.
Well, well, that's a whole different, that's a different logic, so we're talking about, you know, the old, old, old school logic.
Cross-functionally to go over this, the takeaway before we come back to you for. There there would need to be a bond ordinance as we go for a grant, because the state is going to require that the the town has made. The commitment, something tangible, something legal, so, um. It likely would be referendum level. We blatantly completely missed potentially on the November ballot, even if we wanted to do it now, we wouldn't come close. Um, so the the plan leading to me was circle back with PBC. And get their direction of what we should do, high efficiency or not, where should this go? Update the plans, the cost estimates have to be updated in order to apply for the grant, but then that would give the best. Cost estimate to then be able to come back to you with a proposal. Right now, there is an approved. Four point nine million dollar bond ordinance for HVAC, um, I think we can all comfortably say that's not going to be adequate. Uh, that's probably not even gonna be adequate for one of the schools, certainly not for the two. So we wanna finish that process before circling back, especially because it is, it's ultimately gonna have to go to referendum if that's the direction. And I would imagine everybody voting on it is going to say, what am I voting on for X million something oh five? And writing yourself wanting more explanations on it. Ashley, do you have anything to add from the meeting we had and where we left it?
No, I I I think you pretty much covered it, um, when we got guidance back from the. Department of Administrative Services for why we weren't approved for the first round of funding, funding. Our reason for funding was not, was was actually one of the reasons why we didn't, so, um. I reached out to them to get some further clarification on that, because we did have the bond ordinance, and at the time, we were planning to use some ARPA funds to offset that cost. Um, and it would have covered the cost for the uh all three estimates at that time, or all three projects at that time, what we. Were given as as far as professional cost estimates, so we're still waiting on further guidance from that, but just based on. The cost of the Willard HVAC systems, we know that that four point nine isn't gonna cover one, so yeah, we're we're gonna need to. Minute, we're gonna have to in in increase that ordinance or go up to referendum for a higher amount.
So, so what do you think, Ashley? So we don't know yet why we didn't make the last cut, huh?
No, no, I do know why, there there's, so funding was one, um, the educational um specifications was another reason, so. Um, both applications came up with the uh the the same three deficiencies, so it was the um funding, the ed specs, and then um. Something about one of the minutes wasn't um signed off, even though it didn't say that it needed to be signed off. So I've actually already started actively working on this, so you're actually gonna see some more uh motions coming to your table. In the next couple of months, um, our Board of Ed is resubmitting the ed specs, um. The ones that we had submitted were from two thousand and twenty, and they needed to be within one full calendar year. So we're resubmitting that to the town council and to the public building commission just for a technicality. And then um you'll see the motions have to come through again, because you we, you have to allow us to apply for this grant, but. Um, based on the communications I've had with DAS and some of the other business managers I'm working with, who have been approved for funding. I think we're in a pretty good spot for round, round two. Um, I can't promise that we'll get both schools, but I I I think minimally we'll get something for at least one. I'd like.
Well, that's great, whatever we get. Appreciate that, what what, the one thing, said some minutes weren't signed off, uh, that we submitted in a package?
No, it was. So, yeah, um, all of the minutes have to, so it was ed specs, it was our ed specs, the way they were written, they were expired. And then they weren't signed off by the BOE's recording secretary, but at in the guidance. In the in the application guidance from round one, it didn't specify that those minutes had to be certified or signed off on. Whereas all the other minutes that come through the town council had to be specifically certified and they were uploaded. Um, but they had decided, you know what, no, they should be also signed off by the recording secretary or by the superintendent, so that that's an easy fix. For round.
Yeah, and I'm not blaming us, I I blame the state, I mean, that's great, if you couldn't give us a phone call and say, certify these and send them in, I mean, I'm sorry, that's just a ridiculous. Thing, but not, you know, not on us, I mean, that's whatever, whatever they want, yeah, get it.
So, uh, another thing that you're gonna, is your, um, with the ed specs, is the way we had them written, we had them written for all three elementary schools. Because at the time when we we asked the public building commission to review the project, it was for all three elementary schools. And that was another thing that came back from the state, they're saying, no, it has to be separate motions, separate ed specs for each project. So you're gonna see basically identical language, and the only thing that's gonna change is gonna be the two schools' names, so. Um, you're not going crazy if you think, I just read this, didn't I? Um, it is specific to that particular, particular language of the grant.
That's great, and so just with the Willer project, it's, what is it, half, it's not done till this summer, right? This coming summer?
Yeah, they they seem to be still online, they're they're still on track, and from what I understand, they were looking at fall of twenty four. Uh, provided everything comes in when it's supposed to, but as far as I know, the schedule is what they had originally anticipated, so no major delays there.
Oh, that's good, I mean, I mean, but it's taking a long time, I would say it's not, which they told us, I think.
It's tough too, because you get the summer window and then during school, you obviously can't rip ceiling, but other things out, we can, there are the classrooms.
And equipment too, I'm sure, doesn't show up.
So, can we get some Fed money for the the windows and the electric conversion? On the school, like. Can you get a for HVAC? I know, I, last time when Ashley applied for the feds, it was actually for the full boiler and everything else, so when. When, when she's pursuing grants, typically those grants are written, provided to the Board of Education, even though the town will. Do logistics, they go through the Board of Education. And she tries to write the grants as comprehensive, it's possible to take care of as much as possible at any of the schools.
Yeah, so the grant I wrote in the spring for the, um, through the Department of Energy was for ten million dollars for all three HVA school. HVAC projects to include the high efficiency gas boilers, because at the time, that's essentially what we were looking for. Um, one of the reasons why we didn't qualify is because we didn't pair it with the windows. Even though I believe the windows are on the capital plan for fiscal twenty six, if I remember, or maybe twenty five or twenty six. Um, it's still, because we didn't package it all together, obviously, because if you include your HVAC, your. Gas boilers and windows, that is a substantial project. And quite frankly, something that we wouldn't probably be able to afford at this time for all three elementary schools, but. Um, when you're looking at federal grants, they look for very specific things. And they try to see wherever you could pair multiple projects together to award a larger project, they do, but. It also comes down to the availability of funding at the local level, and um, we just don't have that available to us for, for projects of that magnitude. Or three projects of that magnitude for, rather.
Maybe they could switch over some of the windmill money to the school projects, which might be more.
That'd be nice.
What, the cancer causing ones?
Yeah, those are the ones that mess up the wells and they don't work very often, they provide no power. And may, maybe, maybe they could help us with this. The school's gonna get the project, okay? So what else we got, we good, so everybody here?
I'd just like to make one.
Yes.
Sort of comment, I mean, it's, it's not about a particular project, but it's about the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room. When Kevin uh laid out the funding structure here, I think the thing we have to keep in mind here is we have a lot of projects to do. Yes, the numbers may not be what they, you know, will be. But this is talking about doing, you know, four point eight million dollars a year. Built into our tax base, which is based on last year's, is about two mils. So, but we can't forget that that's still there, and I mean, we could talk about bonding and metal pieces and whatever, but. We can't, we can't lose sight of the fact that, you know, a plan that we're talking about here has, you know. Fifty percent of it is in part of the budget that we've never. Attack, you know, we've never put into the budget as long as I've been on the board. Something we have to think about. Yeah.
But, but a lot or not, I mean, we, we, I, I guess I'm looking at the infrastructure bridges, we, I know we have more to do with a couple of the bridges, but we fixed bridges. We've done sidewalks, we've uh done local road paving, we certainly buy vehicles. We um, you know, some of the things we haven't done, but.
Some of that was grants.
Yeah.
We're talking about the portion that's gonna be funded by.
But not surplus, is not.
And we still have yet to see what's gonna happen on the non-capital side of the equation, because. Now, there's money not in there, like the half a million dollars for the police, so it's not in there this year. We still got salary increases, we still yet to see what the BOE budget is gonna be, our budget's gonna be. Get two mils out of that itself.
It can be a wet line. See, I will remind everybody, what, what I said last year in the budget when it went through. Um, the mill rate is below thirty two sixty. The town had a five hundred ninety thousand dollar grant for the motor vehicle cap, which essentially is the map, where the mill rate is and that cap. You're below the cap, it's always one year in arrears, which means next year, Berlin will receive zero. So that's a five hundred ninety thousand dollar revenue item in the budget for FY twenty four that will not be there.
Penalized for a low mill rate, yeah, what a, what a wonderful country.
Well, I mean, the intent of the grant was to stay.
Well, I know it's.
But the intent was to compensate for the state putting an artificial cap against what it would have been, that cap has no impact. Taxpayers actually enjoy the benefit of a lower on both real estate and, it's actually, it's a good thing.
Right, right.
Uh, it just creates a hole, if you take that, plus the additional police officers, which both will lack in. You're looking at a million plus of a swing, the wrong direction, just from the operating elements.
Well, we're really gonna, you know, have to the budget to make sure that we. If there's more, I mean, surplus and awesome, because we've had consistent three million. Dollar surplus through the last how many years, so we really gotta look at that part of it too.
Whatever happened to the money for the high school, let me see, the reimbursement, yes, it's still going through the process. That department that handles this, same one, that's the HVAC grants, it's the same one. They were actually going through and it just finished up the latest phase, I believe the report came out in August, if I'm not mistaken, from the commissioner. They were working to do a full audit of a sample of school projects, so that department was dealing with the. Federal investigation, the legal investigation, so in addition to their normal work, which was already quite onerous, they've had that. Um, continue to, to acquire, continue to push.
Where are we supposed to get back, Kevin, what's the figure?
We put in, if, if what we put in came through, little bit over two point nine. But it's real money, it's substantial money.
But we have no clue, right? Is there, like, is it usually a three year timeframe?
Saying some schools, some districts are five, eight.
They got to do their body, it's for the bonds, what we pay. Twenty year bonds, they have twenty years.
The last bond is twenty thirty six. If it hit that point, we could actually look at the numbers as you fall into the window, you could actually retire the bonds.
I wonder if they're gonna have a work when they repair income taxes, maybe, we could say, well, we'll get to it in about ten years. So, um, what else, got any, George, Sandy, anybody else?
The only other thing I just wanted, I don't know if you wanna mention, um, we have vital records, and I know you saw it in there.
Yes.
Um, but the town clerk has vital records. They're in a vault, there's fire suppression, et cetera, so it's not a cheap undertaking. But if you bend a town hall, it's at the end, you either go left or right, or the vital records are to the left right now, which coming around. Assessor's office. So, we've got money in there, it's not a huge request right now, because it's to do um architectural work. To figure out going in there, reorganizing assessor's office, creating space, but. The growth of the town, they're all obviously very much aware of the various growth that has been going on several years. Also creates a lot more land records, a lot more records, and a lot more even for that, so.
Is that a vault, vault expansion, is that what you?
Yeah, we're running out of room.
Yeah.
For the land records, and even the vitals, so. For some reason, my office is, my office is in the middle of the two blocks.
Yeah.
And as Kevin said, if you go to the one on the right, that's where the vital records are, birth, death, marriages, military. We also keep the contracts there and the minutes.
It's off your, off your office, or that's off the, that's off your office?
Yeah.
To the left, to the left, when you walk in your office.
To the right.
As you walk in and you're heading into my office.
Yes.
To the right is where the vital records are, which are birth, death, and marriages. Also, the uh military discharges, the contracts and the minutes and uh election supplies. Over to the left, as you walk in, is where the land records are. That's where we're running into a definite issue. We've gone to smaller books, we've got everything we possibly can to, um, I have uh additional rolling shelves in there. So we have used up as much as we can of the space. And um, we definitely will be running out, not gonna say we're gonna run out next year, but it could be the year after.
Where do we put the vault, where would we put an vault?
So, right now, what we're hoping to go into is part of the assessor's vault. So the expansion would be to change where Joe's office is, move the staff in the front. So that they're right there when somebody walks in, Joe's office is more in the back, and there is a lot of room there, and then we can. Head into their vault and give us a little bit more room. And, and, but I'm gonna tell you is that, and I won't be here, but.
Wait, no one case, please.
Uh, well, probably just thirty four leakers room, but, um, well, I mean, but, um, the. Uh, unfortunately, the records are not gonna ever disappear. So I would say within, you know, maybe ten, fifteen years, you're looking at another possible expansion. And never mind the fact that the vitals are also getting tight, and we continue to look at different ways to maneuver that. I'm not saying that there isn't other ways to do it, but that's where we would like to bring in Dr. Tech and find out what to do. And I wanna illustrate this very, very strongly, that in my term here. And I'm sorry, I have a cold, as you know, but um, during one time, we um, did not have any power at town hall. And yet we still opened, the only one who had power at that time was the town manager's office, now we have a generator now. But again, nothing is a hundred percent, I actually had title searchers and attorneys in that vault with flashlights. All right, so then fast forward to Christmas of, Christmas Day of twenty twenty two. And as many of you have heard, the land record system occupied by COT system, which has about eighty. Seven towns in Connecticut, um, were subject to a ransom scam. And we could not operate our cash register or anything else. Now, our town was very good, because, and we're finding that this didn't happen in all other towns, but we keep paper records. All of our, like, land records, I know, all of our land records are microfilmed, yes, and they're images. But they're also printed out, so there was challenges, do not do this, and now they're being, they're getting cited. And then also with our day book, by our state statute, you have to keep a written handwritten book. You know, so we went back to the handwritten book, which is what, what I did back in nineteen eighty eight. When I started as a town clerk and I was only ten. But they, those are the things that provides continuity you need to have. And the issue is, is that, um, there was one town, and I believe it was a more eastern part. Uh, they couldn't, they couldn't complete sales of houses. Because they couldn't verify that the, that the warranty was clean. So this is where there's reasons why you need paper, um, it will, you know, uh, we. Under that part, we operate under the public administration, which operates under the state library. And we have to keep the paper, but it makes sense, we've been through these two, in, two things, that now we know why we need the paper.
Kate, you have these answers to cyber criminals, paper, they can't get it, there we go, wow, what a, what a thought.
You know, back in nineteen eighty.
And a vault, that's it, that's all you need.
Yeah, I'll lock them out, I'll lock them in.
So they're gonna add, would you just push out the walls to one, is there a wall, there's not a wall, there's just a pa, the paper records wall?
Right now, there is a cage, so we think that we can actually take the cage down. And see if we can't do the expansion that way into the assessor's vault.
A cage in, in the concrete, or what?
Well, it's an actual, like, metal cage.
Oh, metal cage.
And it was set up some time ago, we have the same thing on the other side with the vitals and the cage divides. Um, my office with the um tax office.
The tax cage is much bigger than the assessor's cage, and as we're looking.
Have, have we looked at the viability of offsite storage?
We can do that, um, but again, the problem is, is if somebody needs to do, if we don't have computers. Our system is down, then we have to look at how far back do we go in that COVID, so. It, it's an issue, you know, and what's happening, Jerry, is it's the newer stuff coming in that they need. And that's where it's multiplied so much more.
Alright, so I'm gonna address the eight hundred pound gorilla room. Uh, I think that between the police department, issues like this. Maybe the town halls need an expansion in the next five years, about what are we, an expansion? So, seems like this where it's going.
A wall, a wall is not that expensive to extend out, thinking from one who's done it twice in the last ten years, it doesn't cost that much. No, I've done.
Oh, yeah.
But, I'm saying, it's not that much to build and, or a piece of that wall out, or whatever, I, I mean, I like, I, I'd like to go with that. Yeah.
Kate is asking, was that, if you come back, you have someone look at, yes, give us some options, yeah.
It was one of the items on the agenda that you didn't discuss.
They get to it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it was on the list, I was looking at it tonight, so, yeah. But it's not that much, though.
It was two hundred thousand for the, um, architect.
How much?
We have to see where it goes.
Two hundred thousand for the architect? To expand a vault.
I, I didn't get the figures, I don't know.
It was for the architect, it's an issue, see capital for work, be done.
And we built a vault, that's this federal specifications that state wants for whatever product happens to be in it, but um. It doesn't.
Well, we have to have, we also need suppression, so it could be a paper. So it has to be that COVID, I don't know.
We have everything you need, there's all fire suppression systems, there's sensors.
I thought two hundred thousand was for your expansion, not since.
Yeah.
It wasn't four hundred thousand, it was.
Four hundred thousand, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's.
I, I don't know, I didn't come up with these figures.
It seemed a little pricey to me, but, but.
But again, I think that that's what you've been talking about all evening, is that until we know what you wanna do and get into it and go out.
Right.
We don't know the figure, so we don't wanna, I don't wanna come back to you and say, well, we thought it was gonna be two hundred thousand for the architect. And some minor things, and it's really now three fifty. You know, I mean, I, you know what I'm saying, so.
Saying a cage, just cage in the back of that vault with the land records? Oh, okay, but, but what, like, are the walls, wall, or are they just a vault door, I mean, the walls, like?
Oh, no, the, the walls are all cement.
Cement with a rebar and all that stuff?
What happens, you, you have a big vault, and then they put up a cage to separate out.
But you need to push the wall back.
You can stand, you can look right through the cage, see.
But I mean, you gotta push, but you need a bigger wall space, you need a bigger concrete wall around.
Yeah, it would be to blow out, it would bend, what he says would be to blow out the back wall and go across to get your space.
That, that, those should not be.
Hold this for years and move them off site.
Well, yeah, maybe, well, maybe it'll only be a year or a hundred years, I won't. Maybe.
They need to know about it.
Yeah, no, yeah. They do scan, you already scanned, but with the paper is, you need the paper.
So, we have, we have gone back as far as our index, index. To nineteen seventy four, and then what we did was we just scanned the indexes and brought up a microfilm. So it's a different way of looking at how you get to that back unit, but um, we're back now to nineteen. I think nineteen sixty four, we're looking at nineteen. I think nineteen sixty two for the next grant, we just applied for a grant to do some of this. So we continue to try to load up as much as we can, you know, and that's of course beneficial, but again. I mean, it may not sound like we need a document from the eighteen hundreds, but there's times when, especially depends on how that. Um, house transferred through, you know, if it's grandparents to, you know, an estate to one of the children to then. To, in that case, another, you know, their grandchildren or whatever, they need to make sure that that's clean title and get back to a warrant. So that's where sometimes these things come in, doesn't happen a lot, but it happens once.
Oh, we'll put that on the list, paint some of this.
We have a question, Brad, but it's, see, I'm here, I don't know if it's worked in somewhere, is with the changes that we're gonna have in voting and early voting and all that. Is that accounted for in the budget, and what's ever changes we might need for that?
On the capital plan, there's called the gray box at the bottom, these are bigger items, unknown, sometimes larger projects. Voting machine changeout has been on for the last couple of years, the registrars. Voting machine changeout has been on for the last couple of years, the registrars, um the the current starts when they took over or highlighted that as not sure when, not sure what the technology will be, we put a hundred fifty thousand dollars down there as a a rough estimate, I mean, it's the gray box is very much a swag. Um but it was to keep it on the list, but it it hasn't risen to the point where it seems as likely to then make it onto the plan, the plan is something either we know needs to be addressed or something that the town seems to want or like, um that's a re- it's replacement. So for example, in the gray box, you need a community senior center, certainly something that many of the town have spoken about, that's not something that would be capital plan work, that's a major capital endeavor for the town that would kind of come to the step back. This one, it's it's in the gray box here.
And we don't know how it's funded yet, Secretary of State had been fighting to get on the um the bond the bonding committee agenda, um she's asked the governor for, I don't remember how much it is, you know, um getting tabulators. More than likely, and they keep pushing off this meeting. Which is another thing that's hurting as far as knowing if you're gonna get funding for the police department, you have to, you people have to meet.
Yeah.
And then you have an idea, but um if it goes through, then it just, then we have to see how the rollout's gonna happen. So it probably will not happen for the presidential preference primary. If we have one or two of them, um the anticipation is we would have at least one of them. And of course, that is possibly being changed from the last Tuesday in April to the first Tuesday in April. If they go into a special session and they vote on that.
Right.
So it probably won't happen for that, so there's a lot of different factors on, uh but that's for the tabulators, they're gonna have early voting. And they have to, the registers have to figure out how to um man that.
Because I just wasn't sure, you know, if it's five days early voting versus three weeks early voting, what might that be for expenses? Can we use the schools, do we have to go somewhere else, I just wasn't sure how that was gonna work or what we might need to do that, so, okay.
A lot of that is also gonna be the operational budget, not the capital budget.
And then the registers can probably come in front of you if you want, once they have a better handle on it. But for the presidential preference, it will probably be at town hall. Alright, that way they can control it more, um not interfere with the schools or anything, they don't have to open up all three polling places.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if we were gonna need anything major to accommodate that, so I that was my bigger, you know, bigger question, if there was any type of investments or anything you had to do. So thankfully, it doesn't sound like it's too bad.
You may need new registers, whatever. They really are, they're trying very hard to anticipate everything and work hard on it, they really are.
Speaking of voting, one final question, camera, where's the box?
We had a camera on the bus.
Yeah, well, no one watches it and it doesn't see the faces, people that go there.
We've talked to Brian, uh Brian about that already.
Gonna fix that, right?
Yeah.
Quickly?
Yeah.
And run it into dispatch or not, or simple, watch it all the time?
I can, we can if you want to.
Drew?
You know, I don't know if they have the tape still here, if they're trying to do that.
Somebody should watch it, otherwise it's really pretty useless. Hey Drew?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, that's great, it's recorded, but Drew, so would it be possible with this new camera on our absentee ballot box to run it into dispatch, so it's live, they watch it, I know it's still recorded, if we need to go back, I know that I can watch it day and night, I get it, but at least it's live and they there's a room for that in dispatch to put a, just a small screen that they can watch?
What would be looking at for a timeframe for that, is is that something that would go on for weeks or just days or?
So I'll see, the absentee, absentee starts um thirty one days prior to the general election. So say for this election, we start issuing absentee ballots on Friday, um October sixth. So usually open up the box like we would do in advance, so people could put the applications in there if they want to. Okay, but then the box itself would start being used October sixth, and then the election is November seventh. And at eight o'clock on um election night, I go out with another person and lock the box up.
Okay.
And so the question is, what?
Yeah, could it be watched for a month?
The the question we just saw is a ra- arise because of what we saw on Bridgeport.
Right.
You know, if someone does dump a bunch of, that's great, and it's recorded, but unless, looks at the recording, I mean, I guess, wouldn't you see though, I mean, if you put in that box one night and you see like, you know, six zillion absentee ballots dumped in.
Yes, so number one, I we don't know yet, and you know, um I've gotten numerous calls on this because I'm immediate path president for D T C A. And until we know what happened, I don't wanna speculate a lot on it.
No, I agree.
But there are a lot of different ways for us to monitor.
Yeah, okay. No.
If if and what they, I hate to say anything, but they think it was hard to say. So they went to an apartment building and they went to the apartment building and they say, okay, anybody with an application with an absentee ballot, give it to me, I'm gonna bring it in for you. All right, if that's what happened.
Yeah.
We don't, I mean, we have areas, especially for that with a fifty five and over that we could, but we don't get that many back in the in in comparison, and I don't know the numbers, but we really, it's the same thing, it's putting it in a a a uh mailbox, except for you don't need to stamp. But we kind of monitor it as far as how they're coming in, who's bringing, who's who's doing it, that whole bit. I'm not concerned for the, I'm really not that concerned for this election, I am concerned for next year, yes.
Do you think it makes sense to move the box back inside, remember the box was outside, I know for convenience, but it was also due.
I don't know if you can move it, it has to have access. So we're not open twenty four hours for town.
Police department lobbying, the police lobbying.
I I I don't know about that, I really don't, I mean.
I mean, I know it's easier to drive up, I get that.
You know, it's it's the whole. I I mean.
We we can certainly monitor it, if if we if we put uh another screen in dispatch for, you know, that that short a period of time, certainly for a month or so. It wouldn't be a problem to to put that screen in there, and at least our folks at night and when nobody else is around, somebody would be watching it.
I I think just the value of of having people know that it's being monitored by the police department is 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 pretty important, too.
I agree.
I mean, obviously, you're not gonna be able to hide, but there's always the thought, if you're gonna do it, oh, who's watching?
Right.
Yes.
Respectfully, well, my call question comes to that.
Yes.
This is especially.
Ah, I get it, I get it, I get it.
So we can't bring it back to the council if you prefer, but we have more information that you need, but we should not be.
No, but but we all get the point that we need to do something like like now, like election coming up.
Well, certainly put something to give it.
But when it is, you know, it's off the record, whatever.
Nothing talks the record, it's all paper.
Well, what's what's the penalty, what are we gonna, what's gonna happen?
You got recordings on the ballot box and I got recordings of these meetings.
What are they gonna do, Russell, we went off the agenda, what what's the penalty, I like to know, it's a sand charter.
It's a state.
So I I I apologize for going off the agenda, how about that? See how easy that is to apologize, I apologize for going off the agenda, okay? Anything else on the agenda?
We good.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks.